How many minutes do I have to speak?
It's still a little longer, probably half an hour.
Counselor, which day was the opening this time? Yes?
Joint election and rules.
I don't know why I came on time.
We have the tablet that is in the field. Through pipe. What happens? That's not saying this. Depends on who I get. But we have six house inspectors, five building inspectors.
Is it?
Building commissioners, that's a lot right there. Board of enforcementation, and a wire inspector, and two on all wire inspectors, and health, gas inspectors.
Eighteen?
I mean, I think it's just eighteen. I think, I think it's eighteen. It's a part of it. It's a part that we've got.
Yeah, why didn't we do it this year?
Well, we haven't, we're not at that stage. It's certainly sixteen to eighteen years old. And then we'd likely need to get a backup. Um, so that we're not having to screen the back of it's fully programmed. So we have to. So we have one, and the tablet may impress not too bad. So that's.
Do that now.
Actually, no, I. This is my, oh my gosh. Yeah, put it down on the napkin beside me. That.
Bushway shut down.
Really?
So when you call that traffic, it's going to go nine.
I'm very. You hit that wrong. Oh, sorry. So you're going to have one. Oh, the industry nice.
Well, this, this time.
Yeah, this is. Right, this way.
Industry.
What is the industry? Yeah. Pretty sure that you were facing it. But you're allowing it to actually. G S. It's not me. Waiting for you. I don't want to say. I don't.
All you need to probably do is the button. You can be like a little. Yeah, right over there. Hold on there.
Hello?
Counselor.
How are you?
Jeez, a ticket to getting a tomorrow's budget, huh?
Still the buck, I think, yeah.
Oh, there it is. Oh, my God, where? Nineteen ninety-nine. Wow. That year I had Willie the Pooh. Yeah, Willie the Pooh. Those are the best memories we ever had. Wow, you do, you do save everything. I'm coming to your house one of these days. Hey, John. Ready? We'll go.
Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Cannabis Control Subcommittee of the Lowell City Council. Today is Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. Mr. Clark, could you please call the Lowell?
Chairman Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Here.
Counselor New?
Here.
Three present.
Three present. Thank you. With us, we have City Councilor Rena Mercier, City Councilor David Conway, City Councilor Sakari Chow, CFO, City Councilor Dan Rourke. We have the Chief Financial Officer, as well as Mr. Eric Slagel, Director of Inspection Services. Thank you for joining us. The purpose of this meeting was, I had filed a motion, just to get an update where we are with our host community agreements and/or the status of revenue as a result of the one cannabis retail outlet that we have. As well as, we can't forget, there is a cultivation facility that does generate some revenue. So the purpose is just to bring us, you know, the council up to speed, the public up to speed as to where we are at, just for our viewing audience. The city Lowell is required to have no less than five retail marijuana establishments as a result of the ballot question that was passed two thousand and sixteen, correct? Yeah, two thousand and sixteen. So, four years ago. With that, we have one open, and we have four more. I know that the manager sent out a communication. So ju- just an update, just to let people know where we're at, as well as there is a revenue component, which, could we get an explanation exactly? There is criteria on exactly which, how we can use that funding. Some of it is for outreach, some of it is for enforcement, and so whatever order you want to answer all those questions, I think, I think it'd be helpful to let us know. So with that, Mrs. Slagel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Subcommittee, members of the City Council. As the City Councilors who were around back in two thousand and sixteen remember, we did, the city as a whole relatively overwhelmingly passed the legalization of retail marijuana in the city. As a result, in two thousand and eighteen, the City Council adopted both comprehensive zoning for retail marijuana establishments, both cultivation, manufacturing, and for the sale of marijuana products, and adopted the ordinance limiting the number of retail establishments to the minimum allowed by the statute, which is in Lowell, five. It's a certain percentage of your alcohol beverage licenses. So it's based on the population of the municipality. Since that time, the city first exercised, signed a host community agreement with Patriot Care, which was the pre-existing medical marijuana facility that's located over on Industrial Ave East. They got into the queue at the state. I believe their agreement was signed in May of two thousand and eighteen. They got into the queue at the state to get their state license, and eventually opened for business in March of two thousand and nineteen. They have been operational as a retail establishment since that time. I have spoken to the Chief of Police in the intervening months, and we haven't had any issues arising for criminal behavior as a result of Patriot Care's establishment that the chief was aware of. Certainly nothing that I'm aware of either. In that intervening time, just so the folks can be aware, the Patriot Care has been paying, we've gotten two streams of revenue, as the counselor mentioned, Counselor Elliott mentioned earlier. The two streams of revenue that we get from host community agreements are the excise tax, which the council also adopted back in two thousand and eighteen, which is three percent of the retail sales is an excise tax that comes directly to the, to the general fund for any purpose, any lawful purpose that the city deems appropriate. So that's general fund revenue, can be used for anything. We have, as of this point in time, received a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in excise tax just from the Patriot Care facility. Of that, the council voted to designate twenty-five percent to the school stabilization fund.
Municipal facility.
Municipal Facility Stabilization Fund. And so the Municipal Facility Stabilization Fund currently has a balance of slightly less than sixty-four thousand dollars as a result of those excise taxes.
So, can I ask you, and maybe I'll probably get into this, but what happens to the other ninety-seven percent of, so it's just, it's just a three percent retail exci-, excuse me, excise tax of three percent on total sales, so, okay, strike my question?
Yes, so it's just a, just an excise tax. And so that money has gone into the general fund, and is available for appropriation, and has gone into the Municipal Facility Stabilization Fund, and is available for appropriation.
I guess my question is, are there other state taxes, or there's a, is there a state tax that, from those sales, that goes directly to the state?
Yes, there is a fairly low, I think it's twenty percent, state tax that goes directly to the state. That doesn't, we don't see, except through the budget, if they appropriate it back to us.
Do we have an idea what that figure could possibly be? Well, I guess you could.
I mean, you can do the math. I think, you know, you're talking about if there's two hundred and fifty thousand, and that's three percent.
Just from three percent, right.
Ten percent would be about seven fifty, so twenty percent would be about one point five million. That's just, again, that's just the back-of-the-napkin figures. But that's approximate, from just the Patriot Care facility, just since March of two thousand and nineteen.
Just retail.
And it's, it's just retail, it's just from the Patriot Care facility, and that only includes, that doesn't include the fourth quarter of two thousand and nineteen either. I think we just got payment for the third quarter of two thousand and nineteen. So that's basically three quarters of a year that we're, we're looking at for that, that amount of funding. In the intervening time, the city has negotiated two separate buckets of host community agreements with businesses that are interested in marijuana. The first, and the simplest, is folks that want to do marijuana cultivation and manufacturing. The City Council, in its wisdom, did not put any kind of limits on the number of cultivation and manufacturing facilities that the city could have. And as such, as you'll see in the motion response we have, we have eight different entities that have host community agreements to do cultivation and/or manufacturing of marijuana products. The zoning put those facilities primarily in the line industrial and general industrial portions of the city. So think Tanner Street, portions of Dutton Street, again, not generally near any kind of residential neighborhoods generally. These facilities are currently in various different stages of build-out and licensing with the state. I think probably of the, of the eight Patriot Care's facilities up and running, and has been up and running since they had medical marijuana operating from that facility, so it's been operating continuously. Of the remaining seven, I think five of them have received provisional licenses from the state to, to operate. They have, those five have gone through the site plan review process with the planning board, and so they are, we're merely waiting for building permits for them to build out and start actual operations. They are at various stages of that process. Some of them are just about ready to go, and some are, were waiting until they got their state provisional licenses before they started build-out.
Tell me the revenue that the city generates from cultivation, if, if any. I know there are jobs that are created.
Sure. So the host community agreements that the city has with the entities that came in to do cultivation after Patriot Care has three percent of the wholesale value of the products that they produce. So Patriot Care's cultivation and manufacturing was all in the same host community agreement, the pre-existing host community agreement before they converted to retail. But all of the new facilities have host community agreements that say they will pay us three percent of the wholesale value of whatever they produce. And that's what they're going to be selling it on the market for. Either they will be selling it if they, if they only are doing cultivation, they will be selling it to some retail, other company that does retail, which is allowed under the statute. You can produce marijuana, and then sell it to a company that then sells it to the public. So whatever they sell it to that company for, we will get three percent of those proceeds. We do have a clause in some of these agreements that if they have a facility in Lowell, then they are paying us, if they have a retail facility in Lowell, then they're paying us on the retail value. And so we're getting that money. We wouldn't get a separate check for their cultivation as well, unless they sold it to another company. So if I both grow in Lowell and sell in Lowell, the city's getting three percent of my gross sales, my gross retail sales. Then we're not double-dipping on companies that are both growing and selling here.
How come? I mean, they're two separate organizations, two separate licenses, two separate businesses.
Well, they're typically not. They're typically the same, it's typically the same entity that's both growing and then cultivating. So they have the grow facility here in Lowell, which we wanted to keep here for the jobs.
So are we not doing that with Patriot Care, because they're a cultivation?
So Patriots cultivation and manufacturing was all, was, they had one light, one host community agreement, pre-existing host community agreement about cultivation, that didn't enter into, the three percent didn't exist at the time that we signed them up for medical cultivation. So we don't, so generally, the, the way we were thinking about revenue from these marijuana businesses is, if you are selling your product here, we want three percent of your sales. And if all you're doing is growing your product here, but it's being sold elsewhere, we want three percent of the wholesale value, so we capture the revenue from cultivation. But if you're both growing and selling here, we're going to take your sales. We want the three percent of your sales. We're not going to make them pay us three percent on the one end, and then the three percent again.
See, I, I would submit that I disagree with, with that philosophy, because they're, they've applied, they will, they will have applied and received a retail license to sell, whether they are growing it or not, and then they're submitting an application for another business. They're two separate businesses. They could be owned by the same parent company, but they're still the same business, generating a product. I think they're getting a, that seems like they're getting a pretty sweet deal, that they're going to grow it, not going to get taxed on it, and then they're going to sell it versus another cultivation company that is going to, they're going to grow it and then get taxed on the wholesale value. See what I mean?
Right, no, and so part of the discussion about this was an effort to try and keep the jobs from the cultivation in the city. And the concern that was raised by folks was, if I'm going to have a retail shop here, and I'm going to cultivate here, and you're going to make me pay tax twice, it doesn't make sense for me to do them both in Lowell. And that, that was, that was the pushback that we got, and there was an interest on the part of the city to try to retain the cultivation jobs, because those are the high-paying jobs that actually drive the economic development, in, in our opinion, from the cannabis industry, is the high-paying jobs that you can get in the, in the cultivation and manufacturing portion of the business.
Counselor, Counselor New?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with the chairman, but I'll get to that in a minute. Let's just get back to the, the host community agreement. Now we are up to five, the four that recently approved as host community agreement at various stage at this point, is that correct?
Yes, so the four, the remaining four that got approved for retail. Three of them have, have, the manager has signed the host community agreement for, and one we're in the final stages of having signed that host community agreement.
So, so what's, what's required, or what's called for by the manager in those host community agreement from this business people? Could you elaborate that for the viewer audit?
Sure. So, so off the top, the host community agreements require three percent of the retail sales of marijuana in this, from the facilities. In addition, we have asked for other things in these host community agreements. For instance, we'd like the businesses to give a preference to local hiring. We'd like these businesses to give a preference to hiring local vendors. So for their construction work, for their security, for their cleaning, for their grounds maintenance, we would like them to give a preference to local, to Lowell companies, to the extent that it's legal, for any kind of services that they're, they're buying. For their, if they're buying equipment, if they're buying furniture, we want them to give preferences to, to local hiring. In addition, we have asked for them to, to, to kind of submit annual reports that lay out the revenue that they're bringing in, the amount of jobs that they have, the salaries that they're paying to their workers, so that we can try to quantify some of the economic development that we're hoping to get from these businesses.
Have we done that with the Patriot Care thus far?
Yes, Patriot Care's required to submit annual reports as well.
Okay. So, so this four company that now received the host community agreement from the manager, how many of those also do cultivation?
So of the four, which are Mayflower Medicinals, Harvest Moons, Pure Industries, and Fresh Fields, Pure Industries also has cultivation in the city.
Do we do the same thing with Pure Industrial, Industry with Patriot Care in term of the three percent only for combined boats? We shouldn't, because sounds like from what you're saying, that Patriot Care grandfather in, because they're coming in, so they do cultivation and then recreational marijuana, we tax them the three percent, not the way that we tax other, other companies, is that correct?
Right.
Do we tax Pure Industrial three percent on cultivation, and also three percent on call, I mean, on the recreational marijuana?
Right, so Pure Industries is taxed three percent on the retail sales.
Okay.
For the marijuana that they grow and sell in Lowell.
Okay.
And they are taxed three percent on wholesale for any marijuana they sell outside of Lowell.
But they do have now recreational marijuana in Lowell, starting maybe the end of this year, maybe two thousand and twenty-one, is that correct?
Correct.
So when that happened, they're going to have to also pay another three percent, is that correct?
Well, again, they, they would only be paying three percent on cultivation if they're not selling it in Lowell. If that marijuana is going to another facility outside of Lowell, they would pay three percent on that. If it's going to a facility in Lowell, all they're paying is the three percent on the retail value.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with you, you know, this is not good.
It's big business, in my opinion, so, and how are we going to, how does that firm, short of being, being trustful, how do we know what they're selling in the city and what's going on for wholesale? It's just.
That's tr- just so you know, that is tracked by the Cannabis Control Commission.
Oh, okay.
And so we will get a report of everything, of, of the entirety of their operation. It's all tracked from seed to sale. So it's not something that they could hide, there's, that's not, that's not possible under the system right now.
Hopefully, in a real world.
Well, hopefully.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Relative to the host community agreements, was there any discussion or anything, including the agreements, relative to any types of mitigation related to, to traffic, or any sort of infrastructure needs near the, the retail establishments?
Yes, so all of our, our host community agreements require that the, the applicants prepare a traffic and parking plan that then is approved by the city's transportation engineer and the Lowell Police Department prior to their opening. In addition, as part of the other part of the, the pocket of money that we get, which is the money that we get from the host community agreements for community impact fees, we have laid out a list of pre-agreed buckets that we can use that money for. It was included in the, the motion response, but it includes things like first responder programs, Lowell Board of Health initiatives, drug abuse prevention, treatment, and counseling, and education programs, primary and secondary education, drug education programs, traffic mitigation and infrastructure improvement, increased police patrols, costs associated with the secret shopper program, drug recognition expert funding for the Lowell Police Department, city purchase use and training with, associated with Narcan, and city planning and inspectional staff, including overheads. So the parties have already agreed that those buckets are things that the city can spend that host community agreement, community impact fee on, and are compliant with the statute.
So the, the plan, and I know other communities that have had retail establishments open, where they have been issues, they've been typically around traffic and parking. So it's good that the establishments will be putting together a plan. So that, that would be before, they go to the state to get the final license, and before they can, once they have the final license, before they open, they have to have a plan in place relative to things like traffic and parking, is that accurate?
Absolutely. And they, and every one of the retail establishments is required to also go in front of the planning board, and get approved for a special permit by the planning board, at which they would be required to also have a traffic and parking plan. But at the very least, the, the host community agreements state, state very specifically that they will not be allowed to open until and unless the Lowell Police Department and the Lowell Transportation Engineer have signed off on their traffic and parking.
Thank you.
Counselor Rourke? Counselor Chow, Counselor Mercier, anything? Counselor Rourke?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's a quick question. I know we talked about the percentage from the retail, but doesn't, doesn't other cities and towns, I think even Massachusetts, don't they, with regards to the cultivation? I want to say it's either Salisbury or Amesbury, you know, they got like a, a brand-new firetruck from, from the company, or they, you know, they paved roads, certain roads, or they did, you know, so that was, instead of the, you know, on top of the three percent for just the retail, right? And I'm almost positive, it could be Patriot Care, if I remember, you know, Counselor, Chairman can help me out, but I thought maybe in Salisbury or Amesbury, like they provided a brand-new, you know, fire apparatus, or something like that. Does that ever come up in negotiations?
To be kind of blunt, that's pretty clearly illegal.
No, it wasn't, it's not a backroom deal, or something like that. You know, similar to, I guess you would say, you know, if your charitable contributions to a nonprofit, or if someone's accepting a, a donation that comes before the council, we approve it, and so forth. You know, I mean, I, I don't want to misinterpret, but I'm sure it's, it's public record of what.
Yeah, so right now, there's a, a very large controversy in the state about these host community agreements, because many municipalities have exceeded, have apparently, allegedly exceeded what they are allowed to ask for in the, in the regulations. The regulations are very clear, that the most, the, the total financial request that you can make of a company is three percent. So we have asked for three percent. The interpretation is, if you ask for a donation to charity, or some sort of infrastructure improvement, that comes out of the three percent, so then you can't ask them for another three percent on top of that. We took the tack from the very beginning, that we are going to be kind of very straightforward, transparent, and try to follow the letter and the spirit of the regulations, which is, we're going to ask for three percent, we're going to not, going to ask for more than that. I, I hazard a guess that, based on what I've seen going in front of the legislature, the municipalities that have tried to exceed that are likely to have their provisions struck down by the, either the courts or the Cannabis Control Commission, if the legislature ultimately gives them the right to oversee these host community agreements like they're asking for.
So the retail and the cultivation is the same company? It's the same three percent, no matter what, that way you take it from?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Chow, all set. We're going to have to recess this meeting. I should have scheduled it, um, for a latter time, um, knowing that this discussion is, it's important, we're, it's, we're all kind of cutting new turf here. So I'll entertain a motion just to recess. We'll schedule another one when there's, you know, much more time. Uh, motion by, uh, Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Drinkwater, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, that motion carries. So, I, because I do want to continue this discussion and sort of following along the same lines of Counselor Rourke. Okay, if we have limited ability to raise money from this, um, I'm not so sure I agree with the philosophy at, at, at any level that we don't go for the three percent if they have cultivation in or retail, considering it's limited, knowing that this industry, to me, is just, um, it, it's, I think it's going to grow for, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, so we'll, we'll bring that up at the next meeting. So these agreements, just to close, these agreements are in place, they're final, and this is what my concern was, and you know, Mrs. Slagel, I've had a concern from day one that the council would have little to no input on these agreements before they're signed, specifically for this, if there's a revenue component, um, you know, the elected officials have no say in what that revenue component is, yet we have an agreement and they're moving forward with designs and plans and site plan reviews, so, um, I don't know how to correct that moving forward, but, you know, I guess we would gauge the members of the City Council saying, guess what, if they're going to sell and grow, then, I don't think it's double dipping, I think we're just getting our rightful share for, for the city, so, um, I'll schedule another meeting and, and we can talk about that a little, a little bit more.
So the thought process is if they are both growing and selling, that there is no wholesaling of that marijuana. If I'm growing it and I'm selling it, there's never a transaction that we could track of a wholesale value. They're just moving it from the grow room into the sales room, um, and then selling.
The last thing I just want to, excuse, I, I, I didn't mean to cut out. I'd like to entertain a motion to get a follow-up on, you know, a report request, um, from Patriot Care, uh, considering, just from the medical marijuana and cultivation, they've been in business since two thousand and fifteen, correct?
For medical, yes.
For medical, so if, um, if, I think it'd be good for the, the council to get a copy of, of any annual reports that have been made available since they started opening. Where's my Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Noon, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, carries, this meeting now stands in recess. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming, and we'll, we'll schedule another meeting soon.